Hence provide families with fresh organic eggs, help reduce food waste, assist with pest control, provide companion and entertainment, and offer an incredible educational opportunity for children to learn about responsibility, empathy, biology, and sustainability. All hot topics in today's society, especially with recent food shortages as well as skyrocketing food prices. I understand the concerns, noise, smell, and pests, but these issues are preventable. Roosters are noisy, but hens are not. Proper coop maintenance and limiting flock size can address sanitation and secure enclosure, prevent problems with predators. Many cities across the country as well as locally, including five of the eight Carroll County municipalities, including Tonnitown, Union Bridge, Hamstead, Mount Airy, and Sykesville, currently allow backyard chicken keeping with specific guidelines in place. After speaking with most of the town managers, they have experienced little and no issues with those and have chosen to keep chickens on their property, which may as add as a very small percentage. These communities have shown that with reasonable regulations, hens coexist peacefully in neighborhoods without lowering property values or creating nuisances. We are still Carroll County, a rural community rooted in the farming community. Chickens were here before most of us were. There is no research that indicates backyard chickens, when kept in a reasonable manner, are a detriment to the local communities. In fact, many urban areas are introducing backyard chicken keeping to meet the growing interest in fresh local food as well as environmental benefits. Instead of a full ban, I would strongly encourage the council to consider smart regulations, no roosters, this is number one, no roosters, they are already banned in municipal areas as well as Mr. Carroll County, a cap on the number of hens, there are already guidelines placed at Carroll County based on the size of the lot, size limits and setbacks for the placement of coups. Coups and runs must be maintained in a clean sanitary manner. A simple permit process for accountability should not create a nuisance or be a detriment to public health, safety, or welfare. Banning chicken penalizes responsible residents and removes an important tool for sustainable living. I'd be happy to assist with drafting and reviewing ordinance language and protect both residents and neighbors. Thank you for your time as well as your thoughtful consideration. Respectfully, Yvette Rippon. So that was her letter. So that's the first letter. I will start, that's the only letter I have because the other person's here, which is wonderful. I will start with names and we'll go down the list and then anybody who else wants to speak who didn't sign up, you're welcome to sign up as well. If you guys want to sit, there are chairs up front. I don't know if you want to sit though. You're welcome to, there's three chairs if you want. It's not like being in the front of the class, it'll be okay, it won't be like that. Okay, so Charles Bowman, I think he was here, but I think he left. Wasn't he here and left? He already spoke to us and left, okay. Is it Auto Gas? Would you come up, sir, up to the microphone, just give us your name, address, and your part, please?
Auto Gas, 2971 Main Street. Obviously the rest is known.
Yes.
Just had a couple of questions and asked for some clarification. Exotic animals, very vague, don't know what it means. Some people said lizards, you know, whatever for inside houses. Can't really ban something if you don't know what you're banning. And the other thing is pets, three dogs, cats, similar companion animals on a residential property. Does that mean inside, outside, or one or the other? And I don't know why, would pertain to anything inside your house? I don't know what catastrophe happens if you have four cats inside your house versus three cats? And trying to regulate basically anything that happens inside your house as long as it's legal seems a little far reaching. Part of it has to do, I know a lot of this has to do probably with rental properties and some of the housing developments in the area, but for us who live in town, in terms of maintenance, like, you know, fence is not rusting. It's gonna happen. Not everybody has the time to do it all the time, keep everything up perfect. Not everybody can get to the painting in the right time of the season. You may not be able to afford to do it right now. So I can understand a warning of something is a little unsightly, but there ought to be generous timeframe to address it. And I'm sure most of the people who would acknowledge that there is a problem, just a matter of getting to it.
Mr. Otter?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I'm getting the information, can you get closer to the mic?
They can't hear you on the telly. There you go.
Is this better? Okay, hopefully that's better. So I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of unnecessary oversight that can be, probably have been, would have been dealt with and can be dealt with what's on, you know, on the laws now. And what if you have situations where someone can't afford to get it taken care of in terms of outside appearance, yard maintenance, fencing, that sort of thing? You know, you can't, you know, put them out of their house on the fees, the town has to do it. Another thing is, you mentioned about rubbish, garbage, junk, discarded automobile, equipment parts. We have a lot of plantings on our property and we have to make a pile underneath one of our trees until we get enough to take it to the landfill. I mean, if we have 12 branches under the tree, is that a problem? What's the limit? You know, what constitutes a problem? Curious. And the other question I had about was like you say, presence of weeds, grass, and plants in Town of Manchester, other than trees, flowers, ornamental shrubs, and bushes, fruit, vegetables, etc., excessive 12 inches, I'm not sure what the definition of plants versus shrubs and bushes is. Because we have a well-planted yard, shrimp, shrub, bushes, all kinds of stuff, and there are, most of it's over 12 inches. I think that may be, oh, just in terms of a little more clarification, I think everybody in town would appreciate in terms of access to private property.
I knew that was gonna be a quick.
Yeah.
But we'll talk about that.
That's a.
First off, the ordinance has not changed as far as that goes. That has not changed. And I knew a lot of people were gonna be upset about that because everybody thinks that we're gonna come into their house and do, it's not what it's.
Well, I can understand going on a property, but it doesn't say whether you can come into the house or not.
We're talking about property. On rental housing, when there's issues and there's complaints, they are able to enter, correct? Regular houses, no.
Okay. Might want to make that clear because I think a lot of people really had that as a trigger issue.
Yeah, no, we would say domicile or something, it's property, the property. And we're not running up on somebody's property because you have an overgrown weed or something like that. I, I will tell you, a few weeks ago, I was out and I walked Main Street and there is sofas, cushions, tires, you name it, there's all kinds of, I don't know what's living in there because I saw a few things move, I wasn't getting close enough to find out, to be honest with you. But that's the kind of stuff we're trying to handle, in my opinion, as far as like when we're talking about outside things. As far as if you have shrubs that are 12 inches tall, they're shrubs. We're not talking about that. None of that had, the confusion I think a lot of it is, is really, most of this stuff hasn't changed, very little. There's very few things that have changed in all the ordinances. I think the confusion came about because it got posted with the lines drawn through it. There's really very little changes, but you'll see, as far as like chain length fence, if the chain length fence has been rusted for two years, obviously we want it, you know, we want it straightened up, you know what I mean? And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into dates and times of how long we're gonna allow it and all that kind of stuff because I, I don't even have that right now. But really, nothing has changed. If you have a chain length fence now, I mean, chain length fences, from my understanding, aren't even allowed in town.
No, we don't have any fences.
Right. They aren't even allowed in town. If you already have them, they're not gonna make you get rid of them. But when I bought my house in 2007, the first thing they said is, I said, I want to put a fence, they said, not chain link. And I said, oh, I didn't know. So that's my point is, if you have it, they're not gonna make you get rid of it. And it's already in there. This isn't anything new.
Well, it's just, I think the points I had mentioned is just a little clarification, especially that was helpful about home, getting into the home and getting it's a matter of like, you know, the clarification of the pets on the property versus in the house. And again, definition of exotic pet.
The pets, the exotic pet, I'll let them speak on, I'm not, I don't remember 100% on that one, but as far as like the pets, we are looking at that. I know Carroll County has a different rule and actually there, I just heard yesterday they're making, gonna make some changes to theirs. So we're kind of gonna look and keep an eye out and see what that is too. Did you see that? With some upgrades on domestic animals or however they're gonna word it, I don't know. We did decide we're probably gonna change the number three, but we haven't made a decision on anything yet, but we are working on that as well. But as far as going into somebody's houses, it's not happening. If they call the police and they have to go in, that's a whole different story.
Well, that's a whole different story.
And if it's a rental unit, we get complaints, that's also a different story because they have a rental license. But as far as your property, we're not gonna make it a habit to go into your property either. If it's, if it, if your property looks like it needs some care, there's a zoning person that's gonna take pictures and they're gonna send out a letter and let you know and give you time to clean it up. It's not gonna be like, oh, we're writing you a fine here, it's not like that at all. It's pretty much the same, we're just, you know it's happening, we're enforcing it. That's what's happening.
That's fine, and like I said, a little clarification.
Yes.
To assuage people's concerns would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenly?
If you want to use the handheld mic.
You can hold that.
There you go.
My name is Brenly Cooper and I am from Frydinger Mill Road and I would like to speak to you about the chickens. So my grandparents have chickens and if we have to give them, it's like giving up a friend, like a dog or a cat. And if that were to happen, I would be losing a best friend because so many kids have bonded with their pets and their animals and it would just be mean to take them away. And it's just nice to go out and have a fresh egg. That's all.
That's true. Thank you. Brenly, thank you for having the courage to come up here and share. Great job. And if anybody's gonna pull my heartstrings, nothing personal, anybody, but, okay, let's see, let's go to, let me see if I had her, I think, she's down there, okay. Is it Jeff Sutton, maybe?
My question actually was already answered.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Zowers?
We need two minutes between fives.
Yeah. I'm just kidding, I already spoke to you, so I kind of spread your word already, but.
I get it, a little bit long-winded, so I'm just gonna turn things over to my daughter who's gonna speak.
Hi, my name is Eliana Zauer. I am, I live at 2815 Bridgely Court. Let me be real for a sec, I decided to come here very last minute. I've ever heard Dad talk on the phone for a lot and I've heard him say so many opinions about this chicken ban. And to say that we have strong opinions is very, to say the least of it. Before I get started with the actual chicken ban, I would like to give you an example of a similar instance. On the 1920s, the government banned alcohol, which has led to organized crime and disregard of the law. Instead of eliminating.
To get rid of chickens, we're all getting drunk.
I'm not sure that's gonna make that difference, but you keep going.
As I was, as I was.
It drove it underground, making it more dangerous and difficult to regulate. Now that that is established, the banning of something of its entirety isn't always a solution. So now, I have two siblings, one of them being an older sister, so I've had my fair share of conflicts and resolutions. Therefore, I know how important it is to give, have a good understanding of the opposing side. So I ask you to give me your side of the argument, that way I can ask questions and know what I'm fighting for, if that makes sense.
Which one, are we talking about, just the chickens?
Yes.
Does anybody else want to speak other than me tonight, or just me? Okay. Tom, you're welcome too, but, so the chicken, I'll call it the ban, I don't know what else the word to use, has been in effect for a long, 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 long time. Most people don't know it, or some people didn't know it, some people did know it, didn't care, and whatever, that's your business. We're not running into people's yards to check and see if you have chickens. There was some running loose last night, so that was a whole nother issue, but we're not running into your yard to check on the chickens. However, there's been a lot of complaints about, and I'm not saying your address in particular, I'm just saying there's been a lot of complaints that we've had to go out to, somebody had rats because the neighbors had chickens. And not everybody might not keep their area clean. I'm not saying you do or you don't, but that's caused a lot of problems in town and it's always been a fact to not have the chickens. It's just now, as I said, we're enforcing it and, you know, it's not going over that well. So that's, that's our, that's our argument, that we're, we have a lot of people that are complaining about the chickens and when they're complaining, that's when we have to enforce our ordinances, okay? If nobody would have ever complained, probably we might not have even ever touched on it. Although this started, I'm gonna be honest with you, about six years ago when I was on council, the second time, I think most of us were on council and sat through this and it was pretty bad. And there were some people that really, really were upset over the chickens and that they were making a mess and they smelled and drawing rodents. So it's kind of gone on and the can kind of got kicked down the road and unfortunately stopped with me and I get to deal with it. So that's what we're, that's why.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Hope you?
Yeah. To address like the rat issue, so I did my research and so did my dad, and we found out that rats aren't attracted to the chicken feces, so chicken poop and the actual chickens, they're attracted to the grain that's in their food. So if that's like no other, that's dogs, cats, etc. And because I am a junior in high school, I've done my fair share of finding articles about how to enforce my argument. So I do have an article that does, that does state, quote, "The problem isn't so much the chick, that the chickens are attracted to rats remain themselves, that remain aren't attracted by the chicken's food, therefore the grain food." End quote. So that kind of goes along with just having that, that the chickens aren't actually the issue. The barriers are the issues with also addressing the rats aren't, the chickens aren't going into people's yards, which is an issue, I know. But that's a barrier issue, that isn't the chicken's problem itself. So I think that can be addressed with having suitable regulations such as that you can't have chickens if it's more than or less than a half of an acre. But again, that's with proper and suitable regulations and not just banning something of entirety because I don't think that's suitable at all. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathan Zauer and we have had chickens for eight years and nobody else has complained about them, which is why I think that we should still keep them.
That's a good point. I'm not disagreeing with you.
I have nothing else to say. Other than the sources that we did cite, were not Wikipedia, they were .edu.gov sources. So the grain-based food, which if I were to have three or four dogs and just leave grain-based food outside, we wouldn't outlaw dogs, I don't feel, same thing for chickens. So if we deal with the root issue with a scalpel rather than a machete, to use a metaphor, I feel like most of the people here on the chicken lobby would be okay with that.
Thank you. This might say Steve Miller, but it's, am I right? Okay. I was like, Steve?
Oh, yeah. Hi, I'm Steven Miller, Little Steven. I'm at 3323 Augusta Road. I read on there about commercial vehicles being parked on your property in town limits. Well, that kind of messes with me because both of my trucks have DOT numbers, I own my own business, and I've been pulled there by DOT cops by multiple times with two different vehicles and one was actually for my personal use, but he still fined me saying I needed DOT numbers, so I put them on all my equipment now. So now if I park my truck in my driveway, now I can get fined and I'm not allowed to park it there no more.
Hold on a second. Tom, do you have stipulation on that? Because I don't, I'm not familiar with that one.
No, I, I don't, sorry about that.
That's what I'm looking, to double check.
I would have to look at that, I'm not sure that we say that you can't have it on your private property.
I know it can't be parked on the road.
I think the intent was large commercial vehicles, like dump trucks.
Well, what happens if I buy my dump truck and I park it in my driveway?
It's your driveway.
Well, because I'm doing something next day, like my trailers are in my driveway all the time because I'm in and out.
I mean, are you, well, are you like a big tree company, those big boom trucks and all that?
No, no, landscaping.
Oh.
So see, and there's another thing, you're talking about my flower beds, my weeds. Well, you could say they're weeds, but to me, they're flowers. And a flower could be a weed to me.
Well, we're gonna have to discuss that a little further. That, I can't answer right now, I haven't seen your weeds or your flowers, but.
It's all in what I want to say.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that, but.
Well, that's another thing, like you got, you know, brought up about that, you know, how to keep your yard maintained. Well, I work seven days a week, sun up to sundown, there's times that I don't even have time to do my own yard, I don't even mow it maybe for three to four weeks because it doesn't pay my bills, it costs me money. So, you know, but I still maintain it, it's not out of hand, it's nothing like that, but I don't feel like you guys should be able to citation me for that or my flower beds being overgrown because I didn't have time.
We're talking about maintenance, I'm not talking, I mean, if.
Well, okay, we can go into that because I, like, I own my own landscaping business. I've had people in the town call me, hey, how much is it gonna cost to mulch my flower beds? To me, it's $125 a yard, to clean out the flower beds, install the mulch, and buy the mulch. A lot of these people in this town can't afford that. If I get six yards of mulch, it's $125 times six. They can't afford that with this tight income that's going on, I mean, you guys jacking the water bill up, which is okay, I understand because cost is going up. But our paychecks aren't going up because of it. So I don't, I feel like that's not right for you guys to tell us that we don't have our flower beds maintained because some people are living on paycheck to paycheck. I am. Unfortunately, I lost both my parents last year due to cancer unexpectedly, so I got their house. I'm paying, I'm paycheck to paycheck and I'm working a second job, my own business, to cover everything. But you're gonna tell me if my shutter's starting to fall down, I gotta have it fixed right away? Well, I can't, I might not have the money to fix it right away. Say if I had a fence, you just said the chain link fence, you gotta paint it.
I was just responding to what you said, I don't know what your fence looks like.
Well, I'm just saying that, but I may not be able to have time, I may not have the money to pay somebody to paint it.
Then you, then, and I'll say this, and, you know, a lot of times, I think if you come in or you talk to whoever the zoning person is and have a conversation with them, all this can be worked out. We're not coming to your house and saying, do this or we're gonna do this, do this or we're gonna do that. I mean, I think we're not, again, this is, these ordinances are the same ordinances, we're just, we've had a lot of complaints, I'm not saying about your yard in general, I'm just saying a lot of complaints.
You can plant that.
No, I don't know, I know, I'm just saying.
Because I don't care because I'm the one that pays the property taxes for that property, so if I want to do something on that property, I should be able to, nobody else should be able to tell me I can't or do because I pay, you guys don't pay it, I pay it. So if I want to put a building up, like a small building, and put goats in my yard, you guys are gonna say, oh, you can't have it. Well, technically, I can because I pay for my property taxes, I have a little bit of land, and I could say they're my support goats.
Well, I'm not gonna get into, I'm not gonna get into going back and forth about the animals and the goats and what people are gonna have, what they can't have, but the ordinances have said that for years.
But you guys are telling me what I can and can't do on my own property. And I don't feel, like, Town of Manchester used to be nice, beautiful, you know, we just had our own rules and you guys left us alone. Now you guys wanna talk about maintenance on this? Okay, yeah, there's trash on Main Street. Why aren't we worried about all the traffic on Main Street in the mornings and in the evening?
We've met with the state.
Because I get, it takes me 20 minutes to pull out of my neighborhood to get up the sheets, 20 minutes, even during the daytime at noon.
Well, just FYI, we met with the state last week, we met with Johnny Oshewski, we've met with Kenny Kyler, we've met with Justin Reedy. We have a study going on with the state right now, Matt, so we are trying to work on that. It's also, we, we do so much here that people have no idea what we do and I understand it sounds like we're coming down on everybody, we're just trying to keep things nice, and I mean, Steve Miller's been here for, the other Steve Miller, for a long time, and he was town administrator for a long time.
Oh, no, he did a good job.
Yeah, and I mean, the rules were the same when Steve was here, though.
Yeah, I know some of them, but I'm just saying you guys are forcing it now. And like another thing is, all right, I live in a neighborhood, our neighborhood is one of the older neighborhoods on the outside of the skirts. And my stop sign down at the bottom, every day, there's at least 10 to 15 cars that blow through that stop sign. And there's about 30 kids on top of the hill that ride down, and it's not a slow, it's not a small hill, so they can be cruising. Sometimes some kids may not want to stop and a car comes blowing through them. But, you know, Town of Manchester cops, they'll just drive right on through the neighborhood and that's it. But now they'll sit at the newer neighborhoods and watch and shoot radar. But, you know, when I called in once before because there was an accident on 30, and when there's an accident up near Sheets or up on that hill, everybody detours through Westering Valley.
You do it in my neighborhood.
And they blow that stop sign and I've had, last year, when my dad was in the hospital sick, I was getting ready to go and see him, there was two cars drag weight racing down the hill in a neighborhood. And I called the police, Town of Manchester wasn't there because it was a weekend. Carroll County Sheriff took 45 minutes to get out there.
Well, Town of Manchester.
And then the cops just said at the stop sign, so everybody's gonna stop at a stop sign because of sheriff or cops sitting right there.
It happened, unfortunately, it happens in all the neighborhoods, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not.
But here's the thing, if, the cops should know this area real well. If there's an accident on 30 and they can see the cars going through that neighborhood, why don't they put a police officer up in there?
Well, that's something we can discuss, I mean, that you said your part.
It needs to be done, it's not discussed, it's.
Okay, but you have to understand, I can't just say it's done, I can't tell you that, you know what I mean? I'm gonna, they're here now, he hears what you're saying, I mean, it'll be, it'll be mentioned.
They've, they've had written, they've asked him about stuff too and our neighborhood's just a shit neighborhood apparently.
No, no, it's not, because there's a lot of people that actually, that are here that live in that neighborhood, so.
I know, it's a great neighborhood.
Right, yeah, it's not, it's not a neighborhood that you call it. So I appreciate it, we will think about your other stuff, the, the police stuff, we're not, that's not what we're here for tonight, but it will be mentioned.
I'm there. Hard to tell.
Thank you. Yeah. Is it Shawla Troxel?
It's Shayla.
Shayla, I'm sorry.
I'm just a support gig.
Okay. Melinda McNay?
Hey, I'm not here about chickens, though my neighbor has chickens and I love his chickens, so I'd like for him to keep them. Good evening, Mayor, Smith, and council members. I'm here because I'm deeply concerned about the restriction, the proposed restriction limiting residents to only three cats.
Ma'am, I need you to state your full name and your address, I'm sorry.
Melinda McNay, 3039 Forest Street. As a longtime resident and devoted pet owner, I currently care for several cats, all of whom are rescues. These animals have been a part of my family since beginning in 2015. They are exclusively indoor pets, fully vaccinated and spayed or neutered. They pose no nuisance or health risk to the community. Each one was adopted with compassion and a lifelong commitment, and the thought of being forced to surrender any of them due to a change in local policy is heartbreaking to me. If this ordinance is enacted as proposed, I would be left with no choice but to consider leaving Manchester, a town I've called home for years, rather than give up my beloved pets. I respectfully ask the council to reconsider this proposal and explore alternate approaches that addresses genuine concerns such as animal welfare or nuisance complaints without penalizing responsible pet owners. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
You're welcome. We have.
Melinda, we're looking at that, right? We're looking at changing that potentially.
Yeah, well, we are, we had a meeting last week, as I said, when we first came in and that's one of the things we discussed. So, subject to change, but right now, I, we don't have an answer for you, but that is being discussed, okay?
Which part?
The animals, the amount of, yeah, yeah, yep. So that is, that is, was one of the, everything, all the letters we got were all discussed last week, so all of it's back open for discussion too. And again, like I said, and I have some more people to address, but like I said, these weren't new ordinances, we just enforced them, so I'm glad everybody's kind of reading And again, like I said, and I have some more people to address, but like I said, these weren't new ordinances, we just enforced them, so I'm glad everybody's kinda reading them now, I guess most people didn't know what they were, um, so we're...
Were the number of cats?
That was, that's, yeah.
Or the number of dogs?
No, it was always an ordinance.
It was, it was an ordinance, yes, so...
I read the ordinance when I moved here, and it's...
So, it's, like I said, nobody's walking into your house and saying, "Huh," you know, no, we're not doing that. Now, you know, we had, we had a problem there for a while with feral cats. Um, and they were all over the place, and they were destroying people's property, that was a big problem, you know, so we did enforce some of that, gosh, four or five years ago, I remember that, but... Um, so, as I said, everything tonight, that we're, we're not voting tonight, because we had the meeting, um, last, last week, after speaking to a bunch of people and getting letters and calls and emails. And we're gonna reevaluate and try to make the changes that we can, that are feasible, um, and go on from there, but that was one of the topics of discussion. Um, is it, you're gonna have to help me, Jeff, York Street?
Doster.
Doster.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. Sorry, my wife comes with me?
You can both come.
Jeff Doster, thirty-two sixty-one York Street, and this is my wife, Angel. As far as the chickens and the pets go, I agree with the people, they should be able to do what they want with them. I'm up here for you having ordinance about noise. Okay, I need you to clarify it, and the reason I'm saying that is, I drag race is a hobby. So, I live right down the street, there's a drag car in my garage, and there's times I start it up, because I have to, okay? I try to be respectful to my neighbors, as far as the noise goes and what time I run the car. So, what are the noise ordinance hours?
The times?
Yeah.
Is it, Steve, refresh my memory, is it ten PM to nine PM?
Ten to seven, I believe, weekdays, and then ten to nine, I think, on weekends.
Seven, I think it's...
Ten PM to nine AM, ten PM to seven AM.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the ordinance for the noise.
Okay.
So, if you wanna start your car during the day, have at it.
Well, it's usually after work, and it's usually in the garage, I, I try to be respectful to my neighbors, because I don't wanna...
It's not ten o'clock at night? That's all, that's all they, it's all weeks, I mean, anyway...
Ten, uh, production of any of the following sounds or noises between the hours of ten PM to seven AM on Mondays through Fridays, excluding legal holidays, between the hours of ten PM and nine AM.
And that is our current, correct? Correct.
Correct.
But weren't you guys going to change that to make it earlier, as far as the noise?
Not that I know of.
Okay, then I misread. Okay.
You go.
Oh, okay. My concern is with rental properties that are not being capped up like they should be, and ones that I've called about since January, and nothing's been done. But you, you say there is an ordinance in place. But what good is that ordinance if nothing has been enforced?
Well, here's what's happening with the rental housing, and, um, it is being enforced, they are, we have to contact, we have certain ways in our ordinance, we have to contact people, we have to send them letters, we have to give them time, we have, they have to pick up a certified letter, not pick up a certified letter, has to go to the attorney, then they have... So, it's, I'd like to say in a week, we could have it taken care of. Most, a lot of the rental housing people, they don't respond, so you have to chase them down, find out where they are, you know, that type of thing. We are working feverishly on rental housing, I can tell you that's on the top of my list.
Okay, because this...
The top of my list. I will tell you, I, Matt and I walked Main Street two weeks ago.
Well, we're on York Street.
Not only Main, I'm saying, that's where we started. Now, we're gonna touch base on some of the other, as I have time, because I have a ton of other things going, but I'm gonna touch base, but there are, they are, we have a list of all the rentals, and we're well aware of the ones that are having issues.
Okay, because, I, I even went as far as to say something to the, to the owner of the house, and she knows about it, but there's no consequence.
There's gonna be more enforcement coming in, is all I can really say right now, but...
The problem with the one we're talking about is their trash blows over into our yard. And I'm tired of picking it up.
I don't blame you, I don't blame you.
I don't care what they do, it's their house, but when I gotta clean their mess up, I'm not too happy about it, we keep our place nice.
That's why we have ordinances in effect, and we're gonna try to start enforcing some of them.
No.
It would be nice.
Yep.
Now, what about cat owners that just let their cats roam, and they're over on my property?
Call the Humane Society.
Oh, I hate that.
Well, I mean, we, the problem is, I can't go pick up somebody's cat.
Yeah, I understand that.
You know what I mean, and I know it's frustrating, because cats, like I told you, we had a problem with feral cats last year. Some people own cats, they are not responsible pet owners, and they let their cats go all over everybody's yards, and nobody's happy with them, um, so...
But they go into the rental house, the rental properties mess.
Well...
They hide in there.
Right, because they have a mess, so hopefully, some of that'll be getting straightened up, so that won't happen anymore, but... You know, I mean, I, the only way to get rid of people's stray animals is really calling the Humane Society, we don't really have an animal control division, you know, you'd have to call Animal Control, and if it continues to be a problem, call Animal Control. I mean, we don't have a division for that, to send somebody else to pick up somebody's pets, you know what I mean, and...
Oh, yeah, they're leaving a trail of dead birds all through my yard.
I get it, trust me, so...
Well, thanks for your time.
I haven't, I haven't. Thirty-two sixty-one York.
Thirty-two sixty-one York Street.
Thank you. If you want to, you can, if you wanna stay, you can stay. Did you say you wanna go?
No, no.
No, oh, he said we were at the bottom.
Oh, okay, okay. Is it Andrea or Andrea, um, on Cletus Drive? Okay, thank you. Um, Manny Fontanaz?
Um, good evening, everybody, I'm probably...
Hold on, you have to state your name and address, I'm sorry.
Oh, my name is Manuel Fontanaz, you stated my address, twenty-six forty-one Cletus Drive.
Thank you.
I'm probably the least qualified person to speak here today. I am a city boy, came from New York into the, seven years in the Air Force, came out to Baltimore and this area. We've been living out here for eight years now, my wife came out here and I was kicking and screaming, "Why am I here in the country? I'm not a country boy, I'm a city boy."
Now you love it.
Oh, I love the heck out of this area. I love when I look out the window and I see cows, the greatest thing for me to see. I have a cat that roams through my neighborhood, God bless that cat, I have no rotens, because the cat roams through the neighborhood. There are, there are, now, for me, it's not, I don't believe that the people are upset with your ordinance, I think the people are upset with your timing of the ordinance. There are a lot of people that are struggling right now, and they need those eggs. Now, if the price of eggs was reasonable, yeah, give it to the chickens, if that's what you gotta do, but with the price the way that it is, people need those chickens. People sell those chickens, the eggs, to other people. As far as property not being maintained, you have an ordinance, but there should be rules to this ordinance, for example, if it's an elderly woman or elderly gentleman who can't fix it because of health reasons, or they're sick, we should have solutions to help them, instead of, again, I don't know if...
No, that's what I said, that's when they, they can call us, if they get a letter, we certainly are not gonna slam the door on them, we have conversations with them, and maybe can give them some options and things, things you can do to help. But if we don't know, and nobody tells us, we don't know.
That's why I started by saying, probably the most least qualified to speak, but I just, I, what I'm hearing is, what we're going to do if, without a solution, like, for example, if there's a lot of clutter, and there's people who own businesses that are junk removal. If the town, if the person meets a certain criteria, meaning that they are elderly, disabled, then maybe the town can help get rid of the, some of the property stuff that maybe they want to. Like, for example, it took us almost a year or two to understand when to put out my Christmas tree, because it's not readily available to people to know. My Christmas tree sat out there for a long time, had to drag it back to the house.
Always go on our website, and we make announcements at every meeting, but always go on our website.
Again, when you first move into this area, that information is not given, but after a couple of lumps on your head, you learn. Let me go, I came down here, and, you know, you learn, but the point is, that information is not readily available, especially if you're elderly. Elderly people are not computer literate, you send an email to an elderly person, they're never gonna get that email.
We have Oak Notes too, they can always pick them up, they can call, whatever.
All I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is, instead of having an ordinance with what we're going to do if, let's also include, here is what can help as well, because some people do, some people are embarrassed that their yard looks the way it looks, but they don't know how to go about it, because there's never the solution, only we'll do this, that, or the third. If you offer solutions, then maybe, I don't wanna see a dirty neighborhood, but if we're talking about something that smells, well, God, there's a part of the summer, when I'm riding down thirty, and I got my window down, and I don't know what they've put in this stuff, and it smells gross, we're not getting rid of that, are we?
That's outside of town, we're definitely not getting rid of it.
We're talking about smell. If I walk into somebody's yard and I smell something, well, sometimes I go to my yard, and it smells like something, because I have two dogs. But when you're talking about the town smelling, I know everybody smelled that mulch that they put down, remember, I'm a city boy. I don't know what combination you're putting this, but I have to roll my windows back up quickly. See, that's, that's my point, is, let's have solutions to whatever we're going to do. The timing of it, because people are struggling right now with high prices, and so forth and so on, the solutions, the neighborhood should be there to help. And, and if we need volunteers, then I'm pretty sure we can find volunteers to help take some of the stuff that's away from people's houses, and move it on to where we gotta go.
Into the choir, I was out last month pulling weeds on Main Street.
Okay.
I don't live there.
Well, that's what I wanted to say, thank you for listening.
I appreciate it, yes, thank you. Um, is there anybody else that wanted to speak that didn't sign up? Yes, you can, and also, um, just so everybody knows here, all of you probably live in town, but there was some confusion also when this first went out. There's a lot of people, just because they live in two one one oh two, think they live in town, and they're not in the town limits, so it does not apply to you. If you live in two one one oh two, wonderful, if you're outside of town, it doesn't affect you, just so you know. What's your, you're making an eyebrow, you wanna ask me something?
Um, I know we're two one one zero two in, um, Manchester Farms.
You are, that's, that's in town, but I'm saying, there's a lot of people, I live in...
Melrose, for example.
Yes, sorry, yes, so if you're two one one oh two, you could be inside of town or outside of town, how's that for an answer? I guess is the best way I can answer it, yes. Yep, okay, sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Mark Gans, uh, thirty-four sixty-three Augusta Road. I just wanted to say, um, as I usually only have like one or two friends at this meeting, um, I currently hold the record. Um, I think, uh, that lady right there probably has fifteen years of meetings too, so that's good. Um, what I wanted to say is, they, these people here have worked on these things, I've been to meetings for, I think, what, what do you think, about twenty years?
Oh, yeah.
Twenty years. Um, we can work this out, and as far as what that man was saying, we have, on our end of Augusta Road, what we call community edging, so whoever cuts first, sort of goes over and does a little bit more, and that is a country boy thing. You know, I've lived out here for about twenty-five years, most people know me as a running guy, nobody ever even tries to run me over anymore. So, um, I just wanted to say that, you know, like, I, I raised chickens too, uh, I never even knew there was an ordinance, and I've lived here twenty-some years, but then again, they never knew that I had chickens either, because mine are in the garage, you know, and, um, I live on the corner right across from the cows, on Trotter Mill, so I guess it smells no matter what, so... And as far as, as far as like the rental things, uh, go, I probably have the worst rental property behind me, would you say?
You call me on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I haven't called you in probably, what, maybe five years about it. I worked it out with Patrick, I said, "You keep your shit over there, I'll keep mine over here."
There you go.
And it, it worked out, um, but as far as like the, the helping thing, if you lived on Augusta Road, alls you'd have to do is knock on the door, and, um, you know, we cut Miss Pam's lawn after John died, I think for three years, you know, this, this is the country, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, and if, if you came, if you came to a couple more meetings, you, you would notice that these guys, uh, Vince isn't here tonight, but they all live in town. And, um, you know, Martin's somebody you can get ahold of if you need help.
Thank you.
You got it.
Clarification, when we send out a letter zoning wise, we typically, a lot of, a lot of times, more than half, I think, when we bring a concern to a resident's attention, it's dealt with fairly quickly, correct? We don't automatically say, "Your, your grass is thirteen inches, we are out with a ruler, you're, we're gonna find you this much."
We send a notification, uh, of a possible zoning violation, uh, and normally, there's a timeline on there to, to remedy that, and then after that, we, we would send another letter, which could be ended up with, where we start talking fines and abatement, but most times, uh, a friendly letter says, "Hey, you know, noticed your grass getting tall," or, "There's a couch sitting along your house, uh, refrigerators in your driveway, and the other door's taken off," stuff like that, and most people take care of it in a couple days to a week, so...
We don't have a lot that, that the people that respond, that if they call and they ask for some kind of help, or some kind of, what, what are their options, we will work with them. You know, it's, we're not doing that, it's not like we're showing up on your door and saying, "You have to do this, or we're gonna do this," it's not like that at all.
I think the point of the question I was trying to figure out was, it's more of an education type thing. Our first point of contact is more of a, "Hey, you might not be aware, this is, this is a possible violation," just kind of bringing it to your attention type thing.
Yeah, and there's...
We're not automatically going and sending you a letter and saying, "You have twenty-four hours, or we're gonna find you."
No.
Ma'am, go ahead, you had a question? Yes, please.
Good evening, my name is Cynthia Bruce, I'm at twenty-nine eighty-five Beacon Drive. So, we had the ice cream truck to hit our mailbox, so we have been going to the post office to pick up our mail now for about a month. So, I don't know if this is out of your jurisdiction, but if there's something, you could speak to the postmaster and the ice cream truck, if you could intervene. I mean, I don't mind going to the post office to get my mail, but sometimes it's kinda inconvenient, because they close at five PM.
So, what, I guess, what are you, what are you asking? I guess I'm, I'm not...
If you could, I mean, is that under your umbrella to probably reach out to the postmaster general, and perhaps speak to the ice cream truck owner that hit the mailbox, because we're not able to get our meals?
Have you, have you spoken, do you know who the ice cream owner is?
No, I don't.
Oh, then...
But I know I did speak to the post office, and they said that...
Yeah, they don't put mailboxes up, like, whoever owns the, is, are you on your own property, or are you in a complex, or...
Well, I'm in Hallie Hill, and we have that, right, we have those cluster boxes.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
So, it, the ice cream truck hit it, so it went faceward. So, because of that, they're not able to put our meals in the mailboxes.
I, I would recommend you talk to the postmaster at the Manchester Post Office.
I said you did.
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
So, who's responsible, it's a gang box, like, right, that has everybody's mail, is it...
Yes.
So, who's responsible, your HOA, or who's responsible for that, do you know?
Probably, probably the...
Probably the post office.
I work for the post office, just so you know.
Oh, is it the post office?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, ma'am.
Okay.
The postmaster's supposed to call maintenance, maintenance is supposed to come out and fix the mailbox.
Okay, we got, okay, so, did you hear that?
Yes, I'll go back and speak to them again.
Okay, so, call it, contact them again, unfortunately, we don't control the postal service, but, um, contact them again, if it doesn't, I will tell you, there's a main number down in DC, and you can call there.
Yeah, and I have a problem, and I definitely know who the neighbor is, she lets her cats out at night, when it's dark. And they, you know, they upchuck on my property, and on my porch, then I have to clean that up, and I have a very weak stomach, and I can't stomach that kind of stuff.
That's a prime example of, if you let somebody know, something can be sent, but we can't, you know...
I'll do that.
Yeah, that's the only way we, we don't, we don't go out and monitor everybody's property.
Yeah, I'll send in the information, thank you.
We don't go out and monitor, yep, that's the other thing that I think, a lot of people think we're gonna do, we're not gonna go out and monitor everybody's property, if we get a call, we're gonna check into it. If somebody's out and they see somebody's property that's in, that works for the town, they're gonna come back and tell us, things like that, we're not walking properties to find out what's, what people have and what they don't. Um, does anybody here wanna make any comment before I, I'm gonna ask, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zouar, go ahead.
Last, last one, only because I think it applies to everything we've talked about.
Can you come up, sorry?
Only because I think it applies to everything that we've talked about, I've been extremely impressed specifically with how you've addressed, "We're not going after this, we're exercising good judgment." And if you could just summarize the town code, that'll show that exercise good judgment, I think we would be okay, but eventually, there would be a debate in that. And I personally feel that when you write an ordinance, the ordinance is the code that stands after you guys leave, potentially, so... The interpretation of the ordinance, not to get all civic-y, but to think judicial branch, you guys are writing an ordinance that stays passed when your name does, it's up to somebody else to interpret it. And if somebody doesn't have the same judgment that I've heard up here from you guys, doing what's reasonable, nobody wants to live in filth, we all want personal freedom, we love this town, we want it to be nice, nice is subjective, but eventually, what a reasonable person would say, I would just caution you, and as you go back and you discuss everything that you heard today, please, take into account that the ordinances are in black and white, they're in writing, and as elections change and the good judgment that's up here may leave, what is written in black and white is ultimately what's gonna be the guiding law.
I agree with you, and that's what started part of this, because these are ordinances from forty, fifty years ago, that some of them, people were like, "This doesn't even make sense," and that's how we had to get it straightened out, and things like that, so, I appreciate it, thank you. All right, if there's nobody else, anybody else here have anything, I'm gonna let Mr. McCarron speak, if he wants to, like, just, anything you wanna cover or go over, or that you think you need to elaborate on?
No, I mean, uh, I, I think the way these are laid out sometimes creates confusion, the, the reason that a lot of this started was that we had three different chapters in the code that had different provisions, all kind of dealing with the same thing, sort of nuisances, property maintenance, and all of that, and so, originally, what we wanted to do was try and collect things... And so originally, what we wanted to do was try and collect things and put them together in one place in the code, and then along the way, try to make them consistent. So sometimes when you're reading these ordinances and there are a bunch of underlines, it doesn't mean it's new language. It might mean that we have pulled it from one chapter and we're showing that we're moving it to another chapter to try and consolidate all of these. By way of example, we had fines of different amounts for basically the same things in three different chapters. And that happens over a period of time and with most municipal codes. Some of these provisions, as the mayor said, can be, you know, twenty years old, thirty years old. Sometimes you make changes to, you know, a, a town council slash mayor will make changes to one section. But, but in doing that, now it's not consistent, maybe, with another part of the section that's older. Uh, so this really started, and it was Steve here, when he was the town administrator, said, listen, we've gotta try and reorganize this and put all this, uh, in one place and make it consistent. So that's a lot of what sort of the mayor was saying, when, when she says, look, that, you know, this is already in the code book. Um, that's, I think, what she's referring to. Um, and I know that looking at these ordinances looks like a piece of, you know, like a bowl of spaghetti, uh, at the end of the day. And kind of state code tells us how we're supposed to show new stuff versus old stuff, and that's why you have all these strikeouts and double underlines and all that stuff. So in part, we're kind of, we have to follow what the state code tells us as municipalities, how we change our code and how we're supposed to show it. And that can create a lot of confusion. I think it has, uh, sort of along the way. People will see sections that are underlined and go, they're adding this to the code. Well, no, we're, we're moving it, but it's, it's in the code. And the other thing I can attest to is, is, um, as long as I've been here in terms of the enforcement, first of all, the enforcement, we don't seek it out. We don't go looking for it. We're usually responding.
We're complaint, we're complaint driven.
Exactly. And it usually, something hits our collective desk because one of you all, or maybe a neighbor of yours, not specific to you, another citizen is calling us maybe a lot, saying, I, there's a problem here that's affecting my property. It's affecting my enjoyment of the property. It's affecting maybe sometimes the value of my property. Uh, that's, you know, maybe their animals are coming onto my property and doing this and that. So usually, we have to respond to that, and all, and every one that I've experienced over the years has started with the letter that says, hey, you know, we're getting some complaints here. Can you do something about this? And it escalates from there only when somebody frankly ignores us. And we have had that. Now, the last sort of anecdotes, and I'll stop talk, lawyers talk too damn long, so I'll stop talking, was just, we had one where it was a, a property issue. Steve was administrator. We sent a letter, please, pretty please, pretty please with sugar on top. Um, and ultimately, we had to issue fines to the point where we ended up in court. And when we went to the court, uh, we ended up resolving that issue and waived the fines. Because we said to them, we don't care about the fines. We're not here to collect fines. We want your attention, please, because your neighbors are calling town hall all the time.
Right.
Saying that you've got an issue and you've ignored us. And ultimately, the person said, you know, gee, I'm sorry. Uh, and they cured the issue, and we waived all the fines. Uh, it was just, we, we want, you know, frankly, to have the neighbors stop being upset. And they're usually calling upset the town, saying, you're not doing anything about it. And so we have to, you know, do something. And it, it, it starts with a polite, relatively polite letter, saying, hey, you've got a problem, and we're getting calls all the time. Can you please do something about this?
Okay, if nobody has anything else, we're gonna close the public hearing. You all are welcome to stay and see what our regular town meetings are like. You won't be here all night, I promise you. Um, you're also welcome to leave. It's your choice, but, um, I appreciate you all coming, and we will be meeting in the next week or two, I would assume. Again, like we did last week, we'll have a council meeting, and then it'll be open to the public, not for comment, but you can certainly come and listen to everything that, that goes on during that meeting as well, to hear the updates on what's going on. Um, again, like I said, we probably, I don't think we'll be voting till October. Don't hold me to that, but that's what I'm thinking as far as timelines and things go. So, um, we'll be working on that. Um, I appreciate.
Any changes we make will be publicized and put back out.
Before, yes, there'll be another, you know, um, it'll be put out maybe next month and then voted on in October or something like that. So, um, I appreciate you all coming, and with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. All right, now, who stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which we serve, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Wow.
Uh, in our stormwater permit training, which was also held by resource management. So, uh, all the public works, staff set in on that, uh, it's a required yearly training to meet the permit. So on to our wastewater and water. Uh, I mentioned that PFAS is getting ready to kick off the design, and are eating their upgrade. We're having a meeting on that. Uh, the sludge pump failure, the new pump is working great. We're pressing sludge again. Uh, we're still waiting on parts for these other pump. Uh, Caleb's gonna look into that, but he hadn't gotten back to me. He just came back yesterday off, being off for three weeks, so.
He and his wife had a baby. That's why he's off. Congratulations.
So on to our parks and maintenance. Uh, Christmas Tree Park, the fencing project continues. They worked on it yesterday. Looks very nice up there, what they've gotten done. Uh, our street repaving project was awarded. We held the pre-construction meeting in July, and we're still waiting on a start date. Rodney was gonna reach out and remind them that school starts here in three weeks, and we'd like to get York Street done before that happens. Uh, they're also preparing the documents for our storm drain and piping repairment, repair for this year. So, uh, hopefully, that will be awarded at the September meeting. And they have zero action items. So are there any questions on the public works report for the month? Okay.
All right, so the police report I'm gonna handle. Chief Hess is not here this evening.
Perfect.
Um, there's two hundred and nineteen calls for service, no overdoses reported in town. They investigated one report, part one crime involving a theft, and recidivist caller, isolated theft, and it's cleared. We also, they also investigated four domestic assaults, all of which are cleared. They issued a hundred and thirty-two citations and warnings and criminally charged seven persons for traffic-related offenses. Um, he said, thank you, Manchester, for another outstanding national night out, and he's sure that plenty of people have information, which Jen has a lot of information on that, so thank you, everyone, for that. Do we have any other comments or questions from the community? Okay, so let's start with Councilman Azar. I'm here. Councilman Miller?
Uh, I stopped in a couple of weeks ago and, uh, reviewed bills with Kelly. Uh, also, uh, if I could touch on National Night Out a little bit, I'd like to thank our staff, uh, our police department, fire department, uh, for another great year. But there's one person who has been coordinating this for the last twelve or thirteen years, and that's our employee, Tracy Brooks. And I just want to give her a big thank you for doing it again, and it was a nice night out, so. Uh, also, I talked to Matt, uh, last week, and unfortunately, the tragedy in Mount Airy with the young man getting killed in the storm drain. So we are being proactive, and our Department of Public Works and our maintenance department are out there doing inspections on the inlet and the outlets, and, uh, making sure ours are safe. So thank you to the director of the Public Works, uh, Department and the Maintenance Department. So that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Miller?
Okay, just to take a moment to thank all of the people that were at National Night Out, who came out to support, um, both residents and our donation, donors and sponsors. The Manchester Volunteer Fire Department, Dutch Corner, Miller's Food Market, Wise Market, Eckhart's Funeral Home, Grace Bible Church, Mr. Ronnie Whalen, Manchester Florist, Smitty's Automotive, Genova's To Go, Manchester Police Department, of course, Walmart, Top Notch Transportation Solutions, uh, Kirsty Lynn, Family Home Inspectors, Spargos, Martha Keen, David Potts, Alicia HVAC, Black's Property Solutions, and, um, Ms. Amy Smith from Manchester Elementary School and her girls.
Yep. Councilman Grunio?
Um, I was not able to attend the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, but I do know that they had a representative from the Carroll County Department of Planning and Land Management and intended to share a presentation on the water resource element for the county master plan and Manchester's portion. Uh, there was some discrepancies in the numbers. I think the Plan and Zoning Committee asked her to go back and review them, and they're gonna review them again at the next meeting, so.
Thank you very much. Um, we don't have a youth representative, but I believe she'll, she'll be back next month. It'll be Emma, I guess?
Yes, she's planning on continuing, and I think we, she said she'll see us in September.
Great, okay, and I will not be here next month, so you will be here in my place. I appreciate that for the September ninth meeting. And I thank everyone for coming. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.